Recording it. Awesome. Hello, everybody. Thank you for being here today. My name is Deidre Martinez. I'm the CEO of the Sheboygan County Chamber of Commerce, and we are hosting several candidate forums for our upcoming spring election. In this segment, we are going to talk with our City of Sheboygan Common Council District Seven, including incumbent Grazia Perella and opponent Paul Hankins. So we are going to give each of them an opportunity to briefly introduce themselves, and then we will go through asking questions that were sent in by folks from inside and outside of the chamber. If we have additional time for more questions, we will certainly let you know. But we will go from there. So with that, I will first go to Paul and ask you to tell us a little about yourself.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. My name is Paul Hankins, and I live at 1407 South Seventh Street here in Sheboygan with my wonderful wife, Mary. We've been married thirty-five years. And we have four daughters, Hannah, Sarah, Leah, and Rebecca, and one incredibly cute grandson, Macklin. Hi, Macklin. He likes it when Papa does that. So but we are newer to Sheboygan. We've lived here about three and a half years. Before that, we were here in Plymouth for thirty-three years, and that's where we were really rooted. We have we have a lovely home that's very small, and it's really old, but it's right next to this great big body of water that is beautiful, and we love it there. I have never been in public service before, but I've been in service. All of my adult life, most of it, has been in ministry work. And service, I think, is service. And I'm in a season in life because our girls are grown, beautiful, intrepid young ladies. And I have the time, the interest, the energy, and now the availability to serve. And I guess there's an expression that says you should think globally and act locally. And I realize that I have been guilty of thinking globally a lot and not acting locally very much. And the only place I think I can really make a difference is right where my feet are. So I'd like to give this a try and see if I can make a difference here in Sheboygan.
Thank you so much, Paul.
Grazie. Thank you to the chamber, and thank you to other people who are in the segment. A little bit about me. So my name is Grazia Perella. I'm Italian-American. My husband and I moved to Sheboygan in 2013 when I was hired by Sargento as a regulatory professional. Currently, I work for Family Service Association, a nonprofit organization here in Sheboygan as a Director of Operations. And I've been representing District Seven since 2021, for two years. I'm currently working towards a doctoral degree in public administration. I am a stepmother of three. I am a grandmother of two, step-grandmother of two. I am on the board of Mental Health America Lakeshore because I'm very passionate about trying to destigmatize mental health. I'm running for office because I do take a great satisfaction in helping and making the local government working for everybody. Each time that a constituent contacts me with a concern, I'm proud to provide them with the help they need. I want to be part of making sure that residents receive reliable municipal services at any time, and I want to make sure that there is a system in place of checks and balances for all the communities in the city.
Thank you so much. All right, we will begin with our first question. And the first question, we will start with you, Grazia. What we'd like to hear is really what do you love about your district specifically? What makes District Seven unique?
Yes, so I do like District Seven about. However, I didn't choose it intentionally once I moved to it. And we came here to Sheboygan ten years ago, and we were looking for a house to purchase. So it was not an intentional decision. I should say that possibly District Seven grew on me because we first purchased the house and then we learned about the environment. However, I think that what I like about District Seven, although District Seven has its own characteristics, specific characteristics, is what I like about the city in its entirety. There is not something very specific about the district that I do prefer. It's the city as a whole that, in its entirety, that I like, and I am interested in representing. Of course, I am the representative of District Seven, but I also feel that we represent the whole city, not just our district. So then, if I had more than a minute and a half, I could tell you all about what I like about Sheboygan, which is a lot. And I would start from the lake. I would go through the many amenities that we have in the city. We are the friendly people. There are so many things about Sheboygan that makes it a pleasant place to live and to grow a family and to raise a family and to, you know, to make sure that we spend our life in a decent place. This is a decent place, and that's what I like about it.
Perfect, thank you. And Paul, tell us what you love about your district specifically. What do you believe makes District Seven unique?
I'm with Grazia. I did not pick District Seven. A house became available that we couldn't say no to. And frankly, when I told people back in Plymouth and around the area, I said, oh, you're moving to Sheboygan. I said, yeah. They said, where? And I told them, and they said, oh. And I said, what? They said, well, that's the south side. And I said, yeah. And they said, well, don't you know? And it scared me a little bit because it had a reputation for being a rough area. But since we've been there, we haven't noticed. People are good, they're nice. Folks are kind of afraid of each other, and I think that's something that happens in our culture in general right now. We keep to ourselves, there's not much neighborliness. I'm not a very good neighbor. If I wouldn't be running for alderman, I wouldn't have met anybody. Now, it's a wonderful side benefit of running. I've met a lot of great people. And whether I become an alderman or not, I'm still going to be their neighbor. So I just as soon get to know them and be on friendly terms. What I like about it as I've gone around, because when I started to run, I felt a little like Jonah, frankly, from the Bible. I was not crazy about the idea, but I felt like it was something I needed to try. And since I've been out talking to people, administration officials, individuals, business owners, and driving around the area, it has really grown on me. And I have developed this kind of paternal feel for it. It's like, I like my district. It's very diverse, it's economically challenged, it's ethnically diverse. It's got the flats and the warehouses, it's got a world-class resort, it's got the lakefront, it's got, it is like a mini metropolitan area, all jammed into one district.
All right, that is time, thank you so much. Question number two, Paul, we'll start with you. What do you believe city government should look like? And what should city government be responsible for?
I think city government should look as bland as possible. I have a friend who was the executive chef over all of the Kohler Restaurant facilities, even over when the PGA was here, and he had to handle all of the catering for that event. It's monstrous. And he explained to me what the philosophy of the Kohler Resort is when it comes to their culinary presentations. He said, it's traditional American fare, made with only the finest natural ingredients, skillfully prepared and artfully presented. So he's basically saying it's a meat and potatoes kind of a place, but it's fantastic. And you can't make meat and potatoes taste any better than that. And I think when it comes to government, people want meat and potatoes. They wanted to do the essential things. They don't need lots of frills or garnish or fancy reductions, I think it is. It goes with cooking. I'm not a foodie, but I love to eat. So it ought to cover the basic services with maximum transparency, with maximum frugality, so that we only do the things we really need to do, and we leave the rest to the private sector and to individuals to cover themselves. And what they should provide? Police, fire, streets, essential services, water. These are the things that a city, it's the backbone, it's the skeletal structure of the city. And that just holds the city up so all of the other systems of the body, so to speak, can function properly. So it doesn't have to be everything to everybody. So if it maintains these, frankly, what I've seen is the city services are in very good shape. Sheboygan is blessed with some really good employees, some good administrators.
Thank you, Paul. Grazia, what do you believe city government should look like? And what do you believe city government should be responsible for?
That's a fantastic question. I think that there are many facets to this question, and I would start with, yes, definitely the city needs to be responsible for the basic needs and functioning of the city itself. So municipal services is the number one. We have to make sure that we keep a high standard of municipal levels. It's not just the bare minimum. We should try to keep a high standard. And I think that we do right now have a high standard of municipal services. So we should keep an eye on it and keep at it. So we cannot just, because they are functioning right now, that doesn't mean that will necessarily function by default. So that is actually a challenge of the city, is that to keep the high standard of municipal services. Safety, public safety, that is a huge responsibility of the city. And for public safety, I don't mean only the police and fire departments. Of course, they are huge, they are important, they need our support, they need our constant attention. But it is also public safety in terms of homelessness, mental health. What is, what are we doing to engage with nonprofit organizations in there? What are we doing for these social issues? So we cannot necessarily expect that the city government is all about only services. It has to be something more than that. The city government needs to convey a vision for the city, and that vision may include all the communities. There should be more engagement of the city with the community. For example, with, again, the nonprofits around. What are we doing for things at the same time? It cannot be just a out-of-touch body out there. There has to be some synergy with the community at any level possible.
And Grazia, I'll direct this question to you. What organizations do you feel need more support from city government currently? And how would you plan to fund them?
So organizations in, as far as business, nonprofits, what are the organizations that you are referring to?
So think library, think parks and racetracks, senior services.
Thank you, yes. So there are some services within the city government that are already part of the city government, and we are supporting. And I am in full agreement on supporting those. And yes, you mentioned a couple of them. One is the library, the mid-public library and the senior center. So these are two entities that they have their own friends and foundations. And but they also enjoy some funds from the city. I think that as much as we can, we should keep supporting them because they play a vital role, a crucial role in Sheboygan. And the senior center, as you know, which we should not call a senior center anymore, by the way. So Uptown Social is doing a fantastic job in the community, offering some type of services that were not around and have not been for a long time. So we definitely should keep supporting it as much as possible. The library, the same, the library is literally a gem. It is a resource, it is a community center. There had been last year, they celebrated under 125 years. So I think that all those organizations in the city that provide the value added to the physical and health and mental health of the residents, those are the organizations that I favor.
Thank you. Paul, what organizations do you feel need more support? I apologize, from city government, and how would you plan to fund them?
First of all, I just have to admit that I get lost listening to Grazia speak. It's such a beautiful accent. And I, so I remember, well, that's right, I have to answer this question now. But I think what I, all of the things that she said are true. I think the library is, folks have an incredibly high, and rightly so, opinion of the library, great services. I met with Garrett Erickson, one of the nine or 10 department heads here in the city, and got a feel for what they do and what they're all about. I was impressed, I found out things I didn't know, things they're trying out. It's a great resource, you ought to get to the library. But as the Uptown Social, yes, I don't want, I don't want to go, now that I'm old enough to go to a senior center, I want to go to an Uptown Social. That's where I want to go. It's a wonderful new addition to the city. In general, I'd like, I'd like the city to be open and welcoming and encouraging to individuals, faith-based organizations, nonprofits, neighborhood associations, coming up with their own ideas for what kinds of things they'd like to do, helping them organize those things, giving them whatever needed resources they have, which sometimes isn't very much. Sometimes they just need a little bit of a budget for advertising or for a place to meet, and encouraging that kind of environment, rather than taking the approach that the city ought to be starting things, and the city ought to be doing this because, frankly, I think, I think folks can manage their affairs and manage things that they care about very efficiently, very effectively, even better than a government can. So I would, the things we're doing are nice, but I'd say, let's encourage more of that, and then just give it the nudge it needs to support.
Paul, I will start with you on this question. In your view, what is the role of common counsel in overseeing the administration of the city? What can be done differently from a leadership perspective? And what would you do to implement your vision?
You might have to remind me a part of that question as I go along, right? The role of the common counsel? As best I can, the way I've formulated it in my head is really, there's a parallel in the church world. And that is that in a church, you have your doctrine, and then you have your pastor, and then you have a board, which may consist of deacons and elders. And those people serve to get things done. The deacons, sometimes they'll have the job, get the things done right. So the lights are on, and everything's taken care of, and the offering baskets don't find, make sure they find their way to the church office every day. So that's what happens. And the alders, the elders, are kind of there to make sure that they're doing the right things, that they're following the doctrines and the principles, and making sure that we're doing the right things and staying on track. So kind of overall vision guidance is what needs to happen. So a little bit like a board of executives, a board of directors that gives counsel, that gives wisdom, it's a broader base, it's broader representation, so that they are, they're an effective liaison also with the people in the community. So they are the ears of the city administration, and they are also the mouth of the city administration. When people don't understand why my street didn't get plowed, or why this happens, or why that happens, that's my job to go and explain to them, this is, this is hard, but let's find a way to work through this. So as far as differences in leadership style or in leadership, a lot, yeah. I believe that a person ought to speak the truth, but speak the truth in love. That's a biblical principle. And some of the recent decisions the board has made have been not, not good decisions. And the firing of the city administrator for no cause, with really no explanation that I've heard.
Paul, your time is up. Grazia, in your view, what is the role of common counsel in overseeing the administration of the city? What could be done differently from a leadership perspective? And what would you do to implement your vision?
Right. So the role of the common counsel is very simple in a way. And therefore, it's often it happens, simple things that are not that easy, right? So the role of the common counsel is legislative. So there is no ordinance and no law on the level of the city that is approved without the common council's consent. So the common council has to approve any law in the city, which is a huge responsibility. Although what happens in practice, of course, is that we, in most cases, we do have ordinances that already exist. So part of our responsibility is also to look at those ordinances and by whether, are they still applicable? Are they maybe discriminating against some parts of the population? Are they viable and effective to all communities? So there is a level, there is a degree, different degrees of responsibility that comes within that legislative body. And then, as we all know, there is also the executive part. The executive part is the administrator, is the mayor, right? And then there is the judicial part. So the common counsel is separate as a body from the executive, and for the famous reason that we all know, checks and balances. So it is a responsibility of the common counsel. And of that, we can do even more, to be a good steward of checks and balances and with whomever is in the executive role. So like, for example, the city administrator, it is a responsibility. Actually, I consider it second responsibility of the common counsel to be a good steward of those checks and balances with the executive.
Thank you. Grazia, we'll start with you. From a business perspective, the permitting and licensing procedures can at times be confusing, or some would say rigid. Are you familiar with these processes? And what can the city do to make the permitting and licensing process less confusing and more responsive to the needs of businesses and residents?
Yes. So first of all, I recognize, yes, there is a big truth in that. Licensing and permitting can be confusing and can hinder the spirit, the entrepreneurial spirit of people. When you have first an idea of starting a new business, or even if you already had a business, it is, and you think, okay, so who can I seek support from? Definitely, the city is not the first, the first thing that comes to mind. You may think of the chamber, you may think of other organizations, yes, S C E D C. So you can think of other entities. However, I'm not specifically familiar with licensing and permitting because I'm not part of the licensing committee. However, I do approve what the licensing committee does. And so that is the degree of my familiarity with this. But I know that typically, generally speaking, red tape is not helpful for businesses. So how do we solve that? I think that our city employees do a good job in trying to have that role, although it is not their specific role to do, to be that liaison with the business community. They try to do that because people do go to the city seeking counseling and so on. But perhaps we should start thinking about an office that is specific to business within the city government. Of course, that is more workforce, more payroll. But the city of our size may be ready to take good, to benefit from an office within the city that works exactly for that, for permitting and licensing, but mostly for, to be a liaison with the business community. Thank you, Grazia.
And Paul, from a business perspective, the permitting and licensing procedures can at times be confusing, or some would say rigid. Are you familiar with these processes? And what can the city do to make the permitting and licensing process less confusing and more responsive to the needs of businesses and residents?
I am, I am not intimately familiar with licensing and permitting, especially from a business perspective. I work at Kurt Joe up in Falls, so I don't have to worry about getting permission or licenses for a business. But I, I am familiar with the perception that I have, that I've picked up since we've lived here, that Sheboygan is, is rigid. It makes it difficult for people to, to add on to their homes, or to get a permit, or to, they feel like, it's just, it's too daunting a task to try to overcome the red tape. So what the reality of that is, I don't know, but I know that that's a perception that I've heard. And it, as someone who hears it, I think, why would I want to do this? I think I'd like to add this or that, but it would be too hard. And I think the thing to do is to balance two very important values. It's not right or wrong, this or that, it's both. So you have safety, you want good regulations so that the communities will protect it and that people don't do things that aren't wrong, and the buildings are properly maintained. But on the other hand, you want people to be able to live and be free and enjoy life without feeling like I'm breaking some rule somewhere, I just don't know what it is, and I hope nobody catches me. As far as the, what is necessary, I think what I'd do it is I'd probably try not to, not to have an office coming out of government to do this because government tends to become more government. So it's somebody or some local organization that is more empowered to meet with the city and negotiate these things, looking for ways to streamline all the processes across the way and say, hey, which one of these don't we need? And like the state there a few years ago, they went to online, I think, I'm not a hunter, but you can license your deer online with your phone. There are some things we can do to make it easier.
Thank you. All right. But we're going to let you start on the next question. So let's talk a little bit about economic developments. What are some areas of development missing in the City of Sheboygan? And what can the city do to encourage more economic development in our community?
I was just talking with someone, actually, a pastor at Bethel Hen Lutheran School, which is in our district. And he just happened to mention that when people came for a basketball tournament, and here in town, they wanted to do something for four hours or so in the afternoon with their family. It was in winter. And he was hard-pressed to come up with anything other than bowling, which is great. You've got some great bowling alleys. But there, I think, things for families. I had one of the people who lives near me say, he moved here from Freedonia, what is there for families to do? And the administration sent me a nice list of, you know, the children's museum and other things, bookworm gardens, but that's cold in January. So some options for, for getting out, socializing, being in public, getting some exercise on a multi-generational level, that might be something to look at. Frankly, I'd like to see a curling center in the area. I think it could be a draw for Sheboygan in the wintertime. And if you don't know what curling is, wait for the next Olympics, Winter Olympics. So that is, I forgot, what was the rest of the question?
What, what do you believe is missing? And what can the city do to encourage more economic development in our community?
Very good, thank you, thank you for that. What can it do? I think the most important thing the city can do is to provide steady, stable meat and potatoes, no drama. stable, meat and potatoes, no drama, fiscally responsible government. So that whoever comes in says, that's a stable place to start a business and I don't have to worry about being whipsawed by different administrations with different priorities and different styles. It's going to be steady. I can count on it. My family can count on it and I don't have to relocate in another two years. So I think just providing the stable place and the working opportunities and then working with them.
Thank you, Paul. Grazia, what are some areas of development that you believe are missing in the city of Sheboygan? And what can the city do to encourage more economic development in our community?
I think the city is doing a great job of it. And that's not because I'm on the common council. It's because we are a good oil machine. The city is working well. And, and if anything, we have to do what we are doing, but doing more of it. So I'm thinking of, um, so first of all, we have to have a decent infrastructure in place and we do have it. So we have to keep looking at that as a challenge and as a goal, a consistent goal. Because obviously, business cannot drive without, um, without the right infrastructure. So infrastructure is fundamental, is crucial. Roads, even sidewalks, I mean, things that do not seem directly connected to business. They are, because business work well and grow when the infrastructure is, is available. But most importantly, as we know, businesses have had hard time to find employees, right? And what is it that attracts employees? What is it that makes easier for people to, uh, be recruited and stay? Which in turn, of course, increases businesses. So, um, what are the benefits that we are offering as a city? That's also the way we have to look at, right? One of them, of course, is affordable housing. So there are, it's not just one element. There are a few things that, a few aspects that make part, that can help, support, um, and incentivize even businesses. And, uh, so that, that aspect of the affordable housing, that is something that the city can help in. This has been already about, right? And that is benefits directly businesses.
Thank you. I know we are a little over time, but I will ask one last question. I know it goes very fast, doesn't it? Thirty minutes just goes right by. Um, so Grazia, I will, um, point this one to you first. What would you do differently than your opponent in this role if you were elected on April 4th or re-elected on April 4th?
So I think that we already have, um, on the, I cannot say on the practical level what is it would be really different. I think that Paul would do just fine. It would be great, I mean, to, um, as long as we have time to dedicate to this function, that is fine. However, I think that in a few instances today, we have, um, indirectly and sometimes directly clarified that our philosophies are very different. Because regardless, you know, you need to, each one of us has their own philosophy and we have different philosophies. For example, for me, uh, the city government has to have a strong, um, support, has to give more support to the community. It's not just a separate entity out there. And that has to translate into support, support and engagement, especially with local organizations. And sometimes that engagement is a practical engagement. It's not just engagement in words. It's for example, me being able to use GDP, um, grants money for nonprofit organizations. Keep supporting the library. Make sure that the library is dealt with just exactly as any other department in the city. Because the role of the library is huge, is equally important. Um, so there are aspects that definitely we would have a different approach with, um, on the common council.
Thank you so much. And Paul, what would you do differently than your opponent in this role if you were elected on April 4th?
Well, I appreciate, um, Grazia giving me the benefit of the doubt that I'm not going to burn the place down if I'm elected. You know, I would hope that wouldn't happen. And it's hard, a question to answer because she doesn't know what I would do and, and I'm not exactly sure all of what she does. So the, the one thing that I can point to though, in, that has been done, that from everything I've learned, I think I wouldn't have done that. I wouldn't have done that. And it's a stark difference. And this was, this was the, the firing of the city administrator uh, for no cause, at significant cost of the city, now resulting in a federal lawsuit and a payout of severance of at least $150,000 that has a line item next to it and a budget next to it that says, just trust us. And the more I learn about it, the worse it looks. And when that vote went down on January 9th, and I didn't know a lot about it at the time, I'd heard some things, so I went to find out. I was in the lobby outside and I was looking, where's, where's my alderperson? I, I, I might be facing them. And I didn't see her. And then the vote came in and it was eight to two, which I learned later was the absolute bare minimum that was necessary in order to accomplish that task. And I said, well, how did that work? Grazia wasn't there. Oh, no, she called in from Italy to cast the vote, which must have been after midnight that time. Now, if there's, if there's more to this, then I don't know because it's a personnel issue. I understand. But I can tell you, that doesn't pass the smell test. And it doesn't do well in the broader community and to the businesses and the future city workers that we want to work here, that that kind of thing can happen to someone who put in that kind of time and effort. Todd Wolk was here for 10 years on the city council and president of it, putting in the time.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Because we are a little over time, uh, we will end it there. But I do want to say thank you so much to Grazia and Paul for, um, just spending this time with us and letting folks get to know you a little bit more and, and some things that are important to you. And I will say thank you for your willingness to serve because, um, you know, these are in many ways bankless jobs and not everybody is willing to step up and do them. So even just being willing to go this far, uh, we really are appreciative of that. With that, uh, we will end this portion of the segment. We will come back at 3:30 and we will be talking with our candidates for, uh, city of Sheboygan Common Council District One, Barb Feldy and Aaron Ginther. So we will see you shortly. Thank you.
Thank you so much.